Yeah, I know.
Are you starting to commit that?
Yes.
Six thirty.
Okay.
Oh, wait, I have it on speed. I have it on like.
Yes, we think so.
Oh, was it?
Oh.
She should have not answered.
Did you?
Uh, yeah, we had.
It's like it's the one they asked.
She said, Kim White.
I just.
Oh, Kim did you.
You know what else is? You people with them have such problems.
I'm sorry.
How can you carry the chair in the trees?
Yeah.
This was my day off, so I actually didn't.
You know what the best thing is right here?
I was cleaning. Obviously, I thought it would be better, but it's not better. Always on your style. Yeah, I just try to.
Let me down.
It was a good one.
Good one.
Oh, he's asking if we're ready to go.
Are we ready? Are we ready?
We're through.
Boy, you're through.
I'm sure it'll be like this. He's leading us on the pledge.
Let's all do that.
Yeah, I just did.
Oh, me pick? Yeah. Kathleen, you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
It's the first, but watch when I do that.
Okay.
The flag outside.
Is it outside? Kathleen, the flag is outside. That's what you're facing, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Me first? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Welcome to this joint meeting of the Beverly City Council and the Beverly School Committee. It's a pleasure to be here with our school committee colleagues and to be here with some members of our school and city administration. And President Abel, it's a pleasure to be here with you, so thank you. I will begin by officially calling to order this meeting of the Beverly City Council on Wednesday, May 7th, 2025, six thirty P. M. And in the absence of our city clerk this evening, I will call the role Bowen.
Here.
Crowley, Feldman.
Here.
Houseman.
Here.
Rotundo.
Here.
Spang, Saint-Hilaire, Sweeney.
Here.
And Flowers. And I am here. Thank you, President Abel. I would also like to call to order this joint council for the school committee, and I will quickly acknowledge those present. Mayor Kano.
Here.
Julie Quelo.
Here.
Kenan McKenzie de Franza.
Here.
Ms. Robinson sends her regrets. She has a commitment. Dr. Jeffrey Silva.
Here.
Ms. Lorna Visnick.
Here.
And I'm Rachel Abel. Thank you so much for joining us. Counselor Feldman, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? We're facing this flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Counselor Feldman. I see that there is an item on the agenda that was reserved for any late files from the city council. We have none, and so, President Abel, I don't know if you want to take us to item four. Yes, it is our distinct pleasure to welcome to the district Dr. Peter J. Cushing. He will be our superintendent officially starting July 1st, and I suspect that we will see him around the district, and I invite him to join us for all of the wonderful end of year activities that are happening in the district. You get to be here for a special night. This is joint council. We have a home rule charter here in Beverly, and as one of the items in our charter, we get together annually to have both the superintendent and Director of Finance or other leadership members present us with information sort of on the state of the city, the state of the district, and give us a view as we go into our budget season. So, welcome. Thank you so much for joining us, and thank you for being here tonight.
And thank you so much for having me. I really am ecstatic and can't wait to be a part of it.
Great. Okay. Our next agenda item, we have a review of the district improvement plan with a focus on our goals and focus areas, and I welcome Dr. Sudzian Turocek and Dr. Dorothy Flaherty to run us through that presentation.
Awesome. Thank you so much, and I'm excited to be here for my last joint council meeting and turning the kingdom over to Peter. We have, just as we have in the past few years, we're going to take this opportunity to give a progress update on our district improvement plan, share some of the celebrations and excitement of things that we have accomplished throughout the year, and talk a little bit about what next year's going to look like. So, as I go forward, feel free to ask questions. We've worked it out to try to keep it in the time zone, in the timeline that we were allotted, so if I go too quickly, slow me down, feel free. So, the first thing is, these are our goal areas. These were the goals that we presented to you last year. Every year, as you know, I present to the school committee what the district goals are going forward, and then, under these district goals, this is a three-year plan, we have certain focus areas that we select and that we work on as our individual SMART goals for the year. So, the goal areas that we have are designing our equity continuum, diversity, belonging, inclusion, and equity, high-quality professional development, and then innovative practices. So, I'm going to break down. We had five focus areas that fell under these three goals. I want to take a moment and thank, because the information that was shared to me came from a number of stakeholders across the district. In particular, Dr. Morgan shared the information that we have around our first goal, which is fostering belonging. Megan Sudak had the opportunity to share with us under fostering belonging, our work on attendance, our attendance goal that we had. And then, we have, from Dr. Flaherty, about the high-quality professional development and empowering teachers. Paul Casey shared with us the work the high school is doing on the civics goal that we have. And then Christina Liel, I sort of cultivated from a very recent report that she did at SISIL, work about our sustainability goal. So, that's where sort of this information has all come from. So, first, designing our equity continuum. Our first, this is our overarching goal, creating conditions that promote equity, moving from diversity to belonging, belonging to inclusion, and then finally, inclusion to equity. And we, you will see this green chart. This is sort of what we use in our district as we follow along, where we are and what we're doing in our efforts. Those of you that were here, five years ago, Andre, we presented and we conducted an equity audit of the district. That equity audit has been a guiding document for us as we move forward, looking at various areas and particular areas that we would concentrate more fully on. So, in this past year, we wanted to say, where are we? What do we need to do, and how are we moving forward? So, this is sort of that same graph blown up, but you'll see, this is this DBIE continuum comes from our work with Dr. Armonte Jackson. She is a leader in kind of the equity work that goes on, and she has, this is a framework that she has sort of brought forward. That orange line pretty much represents where we are in the process. In her estimation, equity takes a good 10 years to solidify for a district if you focus your attention on equity, to kind of achieve that, you know, that distinction of equity within your district. So, we know that's sort of where we are. We had done a lot of work in our first three or four years around diversity and understanding what it is, looking at representation. Are we providing representation in our schools? We are looking at data, making sure that we understand what that means and looks like. But just knowing what diversity is doesn't really get you where you want to go. The next phase of it is really belonging, and belonging is really where you get to the stage where you're creating a culture where folks feel welcome across difference, and they're, it's manifested in the relationships that you have and the work that you do. So, this particular, Dr. Armonte Jackson has this sort of, the bottom part of the graph you'll see. She talks about diversity is you've been asked to the party. Come, we welcome you, you can be in our school. Belonging is really that the, that all individuals are beginning to feel welcomed, and they're comfortable going to the party. But then there's inclusion, which not only means you're welcome, but you've been asked to plan the party. You're part of the decision-making process. And then finally, achieving equity really is when the, when you can redefine what the party entails, who has the power to plan the party, and if there really even should be a party. I love that little anecdote as I think about what does it look like as we move in our efforts across the continuum. And so, belonging is really, we believe, where we are in Beverly and the work that we've done. And so, this next slide represents some of the things individually that we've looked at as we work on fostering belonging. So, one area our equity audit had pointed out was that advanced coursework was somewhat dependent upon your, what you bring to the school, rather than just being an opportunity that everybody avails themselves to on a regular basis. And so, we've worked really hard on that, and we presented data over the last few years. So, we've really worked as we continue to increase the percentage of our racial subgroups and our low-income students that can access advanced coursework. It was a finding within our data this year that we've done, we've been doing a really good job, and we're continuing to work in that direction. Culturally responsive teaching and social-emotional learning, educators embedding culturally responsive teaching and social-emotional learning strategies into the classroom so that they're preparing all students. Diversity, belonging, and inclusion in equity training. We do a lot of training across staff in various times, and you'll see later when Dr. Flaherty's presenting some of the high-quality professional development that we've provided that, where that falls. Elevating student voices is an important part of our work. We've worked hard. We have a student ambassador cabinet here at the high school, where students are part of a cabinet. We meet regularly. I hear from them. They had a very big part in the development and the implementation of the civics course that you're going to hear about a little bit later, as well as other, other areas and other issues. I think that's spreading down. I think Mr. Thomas has created his own mini-cabinet at the high school, sort of mirroring that, so students have that opportunity to meet with him and miss all of Earth's same at the middle school. And then finally, a real important part of our work is expanding our community partnerships. And again, you'll see in some of the work that Megan Sudak and the BPS Connects have done, really highlights some of those things. So, this is sort of an overarching objective that we have, but it really falls into all of the other categories as we go along. A second area of our designing the equity continuum, still falling under that fostering belonging, was addressing chronic absenteeism. And so, I know that many of you are familiar, we, there was, I like this, she said simply a brand name change. We called it City Connects for the first two years that we were involved in this initiative. City Connects is a brand that Boston College sort of brings forward, and in partnership with Boston College, we spent two years digging deeply into the work that we do and how we would set it up. The goal here was really addressing the unique social-emotional needs of every student, rather than waiting for students to rise to the top to need services. We wanted to make sure that we were looking closely at students and that we had a really good picture of who they were. The BPS community connection of councils, they connect students and families to a network of tailored services. That has been the really big change over the last two years. We have built strong and deep partnerships with community partners that avail our families to services in a really much more organized way. We joke often at school committee meetings about the chaos slide, and that chaos slide, really, we don't use that anymore. We have a real nice framework for how our services fall. Programming includes a whole student review, which means that at the beginning and end of each school year, that students are reviewed with their classroom teacher and the Connects counselors. Individual review, should there be individual concerns for students. Connecting and providing resources to family is really where this has grown. Providing that access and social work element to our schools, particularly at our elementary schools, has been really helpful. And attendance team, and we're going to talk a little bit more about attendance, that was a huge initiative for us this year as we go forward. So, we, coming out of the pandemic, chronic absenteeism for students was a challenge across the country, but particularly in the Commonwealth and in Beverly. And so, we have, they put together a BPS CARES plan, CARES standing for Chronic Absentee Reduction Efforts. And it was a, it was a campaign built on fun and energizing and bringing to folks the importance of attendance and why being in school is so important. There were, this depicts some of the successes of that or some of the things that happened through that. There was a Cabot Street banner that flew from September 23rd to October 7th, talking about attendance is everyone's superpower, and we talk about being a hero, here, every day, ready, on time. You'll see, I wonder if you can see, there's a picture somewhere in here, our school clerks dress up in hero capes and masks, and, you know, we make a real celebration about being to school every day, ready, and on time. And so, we kicked off the school year this summer with an event at Holcroft Park. Where's Mr. Crowley? Thank you very much. He pushed my mother up the hill in wheelchair as we were attending. And that, that was an event with arts and crafts and an attendance scavenger hunt, and there were haircuts that were provided free of charge to students. There were, bootstraps was there with their marketing services. There was resource sharing, students with backpacks and, you know, supplies that they would need to come back to school. And then the students signed the attendance hero pledge for the year while they were at that event. We had a lot of BPS hero initiatives. There are brag tags that we hand out at the school year when certain attendance goals are met by students. And then, there are tardy signs and sign-in protocols, which may have been one of the, we think, a pretty effective, there's a slide at the end that talks about it, but basically, it will be, when you drive up to a school and you're dropping your child off, it says, "Welcome, we're so excited you're here." And then at 7:55, it turns around and it says, "Oops, you're late. Your grown-up can bring you into the office to sign in." And attendance, our tardiness really, it really helps to improve tardiness. So, those are some of the initiatives that we had. Again, these are pictures of the brag tags that we used. That's Mrs. Goodwin in the middle at the bottom at the Centerville School, dressed up as her, in a hero costume, as one of our hero, attendance heroes. So, these are just, just sort of talks a little bit about it. I think that this bottom left corner, there was a very special event at North Beverly, and this is a group of North Beverly students that were, they dressed up in their hero costumes, and they went around and they were really working, talking about attendance and really pushing to have better attendance. So, we had, these are the tardy signs and protocols and some data about that. The gray depicts the year before, and orange is now just sort of a little showing that we've reduced the number of tardies by month. You know, there's been some disruptions this year that is, may impact our attendance data as we collect it for the year long. However, we're really, really proud of the work that our, our councils and our staff have done around really encouraging folks to get to school on time, every day, ready, on time. The next goal that we have, the next area, our goal area that we're looking at is the high-quality professional development, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Flaherty to walk us through some of these accomplishments that we had, so.
One of the exciting parts of my job is when I get to work with our adults around the high-quality professional development, and that happens throughout the school year in the big initiatives, when we can do like Election Day and then over the summer, so that we can prep for the coming year with our administrators. And so, our, our goal is to engage teachers, administrators, and other staff at all levels in professional development to create a supportive and engaging learning environment that caters to diverse learning needs. And we have a really good, diverse staff as far as years of service. So, we still, we have quite a few young teachers that are still growing and need some of the professional development around effective teaching strategies and how to build inclusivity or use scaffolding to make sure that all students can reach rigorous curriculum and achieve at high levels on grade level. But we also have a very large group of master teachers who are very good at their craft, and, but there's always ways that we can learn to grow, new, new ideas, new strategies that come out. And I loved this quote from Ralph Waldo Emerson that says, "Unless you try to do something beyond what you have already mastered, you will never grow." And I think that's a good message that we need to send to our students as well. This will give you an idea of all of the learning that happened over the summer last year, and we have very similar type courses that will be offered. The catalog just went out to staff to start doing their planning, and the actual signup will happen in another couple of weeks. We had to switch our vendor that we were working with, and so, we're working on getting all of our providers into the college system and getting their courses approved. And so, these were district-offered graduate courses, and we had 48 teachers who took three credit courses that were offered by our district administrators and staff. On top of that, we've been very, very grateful for the last two years and will continue this summer for a BEVED grant with the Cummings Center, and it has allowed us to send a large group of teachers to Landmark for their summer course offerings. What you see here were seven participants. Those were in three-credit grad classes, but we also had a multitude of workshops that teachers took for PDPs. And you can see it was $3,700. The year before, the summer before, we had over $7,000 that were provided for staff that wanted to take courses. When we talk about partnerships, we do a lot of work with Primary Source through the school year and then also in the summer. This Primary Source does a lot of online and in-person trainings and workshops for social studies, and this again was for courses that we took, but there's also a much larger number that take on daily, just one-day workshops throughout time. We offer 21 different opportunities for teachers to earn PDPs. That stands for Professional Development Points, and this is what teachers need for relicensing. And so, if you're not taking grad credits, which give you, you know, a 67, they need 125. One three-credit course will give them 67, but if not, they have a five-year cycle. And each year, they can add to that in increments of 10 PDPs and in any one topic. And you can see here that there was a breadth of options that ran from health and wellness to our multi-language learners to special ed. We try to find some courses for our staff, like nursing and counselors, that don't, they're not easy to find, and so, we work with our administrators to find connections where they can do that and offer those over the summer as well. I was very pleased last year that we were able to use some very large literacy grant that we had. This was the end of the literacy grant. It was over $200,000 that we were awarded to implement Witten Wisdom at grades K through five. We had made a decision last year when we went with reading reconsidered for grades six through eight. It did not have a writing component with it, and we wanted students to be able to stay learning what they had already used, and so, we made a decision that we would implement writing curriculum that is already being used in the elementary school and would be carried up through eighth grade. And so, the, this session was open to faculty in grades K through eight, and after working with the writing component for a year, they came together to work, talk about feedback, look at survey results, and made some collaborative decisions about ways to make it even better and to match more of the, the work that we were doing in Beverly. And we had 65 teachers that participated in that. It was a week-long event at Endicott, and we were able to pay them to participate as well. So, the, the coaches each took a grade level, and they were able to break out by grade level and do district-wide work at each of those grade levels. And then we offered, in conjunction with that, in the afternoons and on a separate day, a refresher. This is a lot for our newer teachers in Foundations, which is the program that we use in conjunction with Witten Wisdom to focus on phonics instruction. And then there was a half-session day for fluency and test-taking skills that we were able to offer. So, you can see that a large number of elementary teachers participated in those trainings. This was a survey that was given at the end of the week, and you can see that 100% of the participants, or at least 50 that answered, but that's a pretty large survey number. It was up over 80% of the participants said that they had developed resources that they could use in their classrooms, so that when we are taking time away from summer, we want to make sure that whether they're working on curriculum work, they're taking a course, that it's something that they can then turn around and use in their practice in the following year. And again, also, 100% very highly rated that they valued the session and being able to work collaboratively with their colleagues. The other part, as we discussed, was we wanted to make sure that each year our administrators are ready for opening day and for their early release days, because they eat building-based for their early release days, and so, we want them to be able to know what the focus of the district is, what the goals are, to be familiar with anything that's going to be presented on opening day so that they can tie that work into their own building-based meetings. And so, we had a two-day administrative retreat at Endicott, and you'll see very much connects to what you'll see in the next slide, which was our opening day speakers. It allowed them to get some individual work with Dr. Darnisa Armonte Jackson, Vanessa Ford and Rebecca King, and Greg Kuliac, all who were either presenting on opening day or at the election day. And it went to all of the key areas that we were going to be working on throughout the year, which was artificial intelligence and the impact it will have on education and schooling, and a sense of belonging, creating a sense of belonging for all, so that everybody feels that they belong in their school. And if you think back to that continuum, that's the next block that we're working and focusing on, and so, that's where a lot of the work happened throughout the year. We also did some work around culturally responsive teaching and learning and strategies and initiatives that they could work with, with their staff. And then they also have time to work with their teams to work and craft their opening day messages. Our opening day speaker was Dr. Darnisa Armonte Jackson and Ms. Carrie Stack. Ms. Stack is from the Say Yes Institute. It's located out of Salem State College. She was a phenomenal speaker around motivation and well-being, and so, it linked into SEL and mental health for our staff members. And while we didn't do a survey from opening day because it was only speakers, it wasn't the entire day of professional development, I can tell you that I received more individual emails from staff members than I have ever, ever have about the power and impact that both of these speakers had and what a positive way to start the year. Then we had our election day, which is the other large professional development day that we have. This will just give you a quick overview. We had a keynote, keynote speaker that talked about the AI dilemma, creating a culture of curious skeptics, and really did address the whole continuum, people that are ready to jump in, and they're using it already in classes and for their planning, and those that are thinking like, this should never be allowed in schools, it's, you know, should just be banned. And he did a great job of engaging all of them in a good discussion and really showing some good examples of ways that it can be used as a helpful tool and not just to dismiss it out of hand. And then we had a thread that happened throughout the day so that those that were interested could choose an AI strand for the entire day. That was run by, Greg did a different session, and then Paul Casey, who has become very knowledgeable in the area, ran a, several workshop sessions. We then were able to offer 13 choice sessions in session one and 11 in session two, and this is where teachers could decide where they wanted to go. And I won't read through the whole list on the right, but you can see that it incorporated all of the areas that link to our goals, AI, mental health, SEL, all of the curriculum areas, multilingual learners, equity, and also some technical PD for our nurses and for the new IEP process for our special education professionals. This is one part of a much larger survey that people filled out at the end of the day, but it, I think, sent for our purposes tonight, shows you that what we're doing is linked to the classroom and that over, almost 85% of those that attended that day said they either strongly agreed or agreed that they had learned at least one new thing that they could use in their role as an educator for session one, and then that number was even a little higher, 86.2% for the workshops that people went to for session two. That was professional development. Now, I'd like to talk about innovative practices, which was our third goal area, and share a little bit of information around our expanding civics understanding. We were very excited that we were able to implement a new course at Beverly High School, and you'll see in our next slide that the rollout of it. It just started as a pilot this year, but it connects directly with our innovative practices and with expanding civics understanding initiatives, and the new course is called Preserving Democracy. This course will be for seniors, and it is rolling out this year as a, just an elective as a pilot phase year one. This summer, they will work with some survey data and feedback that they get from students and faculty, and they will tweak that into the pilot for phase two for year two, and it will be open to students to take as an elective with the goal that for year three, it will become a graduation requirement, and all seniors for the class of 2027 will have to take this course. There was some really key pieces that they work very diligently with, and as Dr. Trocek had mentioned earlier, the Student Advisory Council had a very big voice in trying to shape the direction of this course. So, there's a comprehensive curriculum structure, and it's going to work at teaching comprehensive instruction across multiple disciplines, and it's going to really focus on teaching some foundational democratic principles that then allow students to take that and look at the historical perspective, but then take that and use their analytical and critical thinking skills to apply to common day problems or common day occurrences that happen and see if they can see threat. that happen and see if they can see threads um between the two and what they can learn from the past to influence the future. A major component, this will be a year-long course that runs, um and it will focus on digital literacy and building research skills, because we need our students, especially as we grow more in the realm of um technology, to understand what a credible source is, to look for bias in media sources, to distinguish between what could be fact, opinion, or misinformation, how to use multiple sources to um check counter, counterbalance and check the information that they're looking for. It will also teach, teach research methodology and how to conduct online research, as I said, cross-referencing their sources, and then being able to evaluate um the information that they're doing. It will then look at inclusive and diverse perspectives. So they will start by researching their own personal identities and their own personal stories and where uh the history has come for them. And then they will be using US and global case studies to then look at race, ethnicity, nationality, and culture have shaped the identity of who they are and minority groups in history. And then they're going to take that and look at a, a culminating project that will allow them to be a global citizen, either and with a local, state, or national problem, and from all of the information that they've learned, they will take part in a civics part participation and work in its group to try to solve a problem and then also um come up with some suggestions or ideas as to how to um resolve that problem, with the hope that some of these groups will take their problem and the work that they're doing into their senior internship, and they may be able to work on it um to make real change within either the local or state um community by the end of their project.
I think Paul just sort of had a, a few more things, just talking, you've kind of summed it up in the last few steps.
I did, yeah.
The capstone, so there is a, a law requiring a civics project for students, um but I also want to tie this into school committee's resolution of a few years ago. Um, this is a kind of a culmination of all of that. We had done a lot of work, we had a couple trial and error courses to see how they would work and what they would look like, but in the end, I feel like we've kind of landed on a really uh great comprehensive piece that will allow to incorporate all of the ideas that were part of that resolution that the school committee had put together, um as well as a lot of student thought went into this. So it was really helpful to have uh all the way back to, originally there was student input, and again, there's more student input, right? So we really, and it was amazing on that one cabinet meeting that, you know, uh Paul was there, Paul Casey, who's our director of humanities, and then two or three of the social studies teachers, and the students were grilling them. I mean, they were really active in the conversation about how are you designing this course and what will it look like? So they're very, the students are really proud of their input for this as well.
And I think the exciting, the most exciting part is that it links with our um district goal of real-world connections and um problem solving.
Yep. So and then finally, the last one, uh the last area, focus area that we have is fo- it was, is uh promoting climate change awareness, um that's just a really, was a really important part of some of the work that we did. Um, I have sort of pilfered these slides from a previous SISL meeting, if you want to know even more. This, all of this information was presented by students at a previous SISL meeting, including video and a lot of really engaging um discussion and conversation, and it was that the students did the whole presentation. So I probably won't be as engaging as they were, uh but at the, it just sort of walked through, what does it look like at each one of our buildings? What are we doing in our buildings around sustainability and how are we promoting that um as a habit of, of mind for, for our students as they grow in the world? So this slide incorporates a picture from each one of our schools, uh from hydroponic uh solutions for growing uh to a green, of the full green team at Centerville, to some of the project work that was done at Hannah, including their worm composting, which is really interesting. And um that, so, so there was just, there's just a lot of work that's been done. Our green teams are, are really thriving at our elementary schools, um and it's a really, we're really proud of the work that they do. Um, at the middle school, um the middle school uh was really working on Beverly waste reduction, there's a Beverly waste uh reduction um group, and they work with Green Beverly. This is just one of their diversion projects that they did at the middle school where they collected some data around some of the work that they're doing. Um, so uh they have been also collecting food and, and distributing it to low-income housing and halfway housing within forty-eight hours of collection, and um that's all facilitated. And Rachel Dory has been the STEM teacher who's moderating that club, and it's uh been a really um nice success. And then at the high school, um there is a green club, it's student-led, student-driven, they too have been working on their hydroponics in terms of uh their growing. Uh, that bench is a recycling effort of bottle caps that shows how you can take some materials and repurpose them and recycle them, and um and then they're, they also have their um impetus around reduce and re- reduce, reuse, recycle. And then finally, I always love to talk about the um pumpkin smash. So they go out to Moraine Farm, I think it is, and they work with Green Beverly, and uh citizens of Beverly are invited to donate, each elementary school collects the pumpkins after Halloween, and they're brought there, and then they have this opportunity to kind of catapult them into the compost field, and it's a really uh a nice, it's a nice event and a, a lot of really fun for the kids, too. So, that is, that is sort of the, the, our goals and our updates on the progress. Um, we have done a lot of thinking about our district's improvement plan as we move forward. Um, we, we actually believe that given the kind of um challenges that we faced throughout this year, there, that we really want to just continue on the goals that we have. A transition to a new superintendent is an opportunity also to bring, you know, a, a different um glance to that. We do have one more y- year left in our district's improvement plan, and so um to a group, they all felt like, while they had made great successes this year, it was something that they would just want to continue on next year. So our, our goals will remain the same uh for the third year of our district's improvement plan, and um we'll look forward to seeing all the great things they do next year, so.
Thank you so much. Um, we generally have an opportunity, if there's questions, we can alternate between city councilors and school committee members if anyone is so inclined. If not, we have Mr. Ailes ready to give us the landscape. No questions? Mr. Ailes, would you join us? I think we're calling it the City FY26 Budget Landscape.
Do you want me up here? Is this, can you hear me, Ken? Yeah? Hi, everybody. Good to see you all. Um, I think um Dr. Trocheck's gonna help me out here, and we've got-
Yeah, I'm gonna be Vienna.
Excellent. Um, so I just put together a couple of quick slides um that we could kind of walk through together to give you all a preview of uh what we've been working on over the last couple months, the Cahill administration, along with all the department heads and the school administration, to try to get to a point where we're um presenting a budget that's balanced, that's responsible, it's committed to the service delivery that our residents are so accustomed to receiving here, a high level of quality of that. Um, and before I go to the first slide here, I just want to kind of preface it by saying that the budget development process, as many of you know because you're involved in it, really starts earlier on than this point in time, because we all take part in a financial forecast uh in the December-November timeframe, and that really begins the discussions of what do we see on the horizon in terms of pressure points within the budget, both on the revenue side but also on the expenditure side, that we need to be mindful of and collectively need to, need to manage through. Um, and so going into this year's budget, we knew uh early on that it was going to be a challenging one, one of the more challenging ones that, that I've faced in my role here uh over the past twelve years. Um, and so without uh delaying any further, I'll kind of get into some of the specifics here that we can kind of walk through together. So if um, this slide outlines the um available additional revenue that we expect um to be available for next fiscal year. Um, there's a couple of different categories here. Uh, the first of property taxes is by far the largest revenue source for the city, okay? It comprises about eighty percent of the total revenue that we bring in annually. Um, and so correspondingly, it's going to provide the biggest um source of additional revenue going into FY26. And the three areas that are going to comprise that additional revenue of about five-point-six million in new revenue from the property tax category, um is from an estimated new growth of one-point-two-five million, which is a typical estimate at this point in time. Um, and that is derived from uh every, everything from new development, both residential, commercial, and industrial, but also uh new investments in the community on the personal property side of things. When utility companies invest in their infrastructure, we're able to capture that as additional revenue in the form of tax dollars. So all of that kind of growth um is important to be able to sustain a, a growing level of need within our operations year to year to year. Um, so we're, we've built in a one-point-two-five million uh estimate for that. Uh, in addition to that, the overall levy is able to grow by two and a half percent. We also have, in addition to that two and a half percent, about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in un- uh unused levy capacity that exists in FY25 that we will put towards the FY26 budget. So those two things combined create an additional four million, uh and then we were able to reduce uh the deposit into the overlay down to a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, uh which saved us about uh three-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, which will become available for next year's budget to help uh support the services for next year. So in total, the property tax area is comp- uh is building additional five-point-six-million into next year's budget. In addition to that, the next uh largest source of revenue for the city is state aid, uh and this is a slide that when I put it together, we were dealing with House Ways and Means numbers. Uh, at that point in time, um it was about a million dollars in a ni- in additional revenue that the city was going to receive uh for next year. Um, we've since received Senate Ways and Means numbers, there are some adjustments to some of the categories there. Um, we're fortunate that the largest component of our state aid, Chapter Seventy, um is the same in both the House Ways and Means version and the Senate Ways and Mean version. So that's good news for us um as a city because that was a, an increase of about, um looking to Dr. Trocheck, but was it about three hundred and?
It was half.
Yeah.
They doubled it.
Okay. So, yeah, a significant portion of this is related to the Chapter Seventy. Um, the next largest source of revenue for the city, motor vehicle excise, it's about five million dollars a year that we bring in uh for motor vehicle excise. Um, we are bringing that estimate up in the FY26 budget, uh closer to where we typically are when compared to the actuals that we bring in in a year. That'll create an additional three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Uh, I thought it was important to, to note the cannabis excise, uh because that is a new source of revenue that we just started uh tracking in FY25, uh because of the dispensaries that have recently opened. Um, so that will be uh in FY26, an additional hundred-and-ten-thousand over the FY25 number. Um, and then lastly, and this is one that will fluctuate as we move um out years, is uh interest income. So all of the sources of revenue that we have and hold and use to pay bills sit in accounts, and we maximize the return on those, uh those dollars uh to create interest or um investment returns back to the city, and we use that revenue to fund operations. Um, and so we'll be increasing that uh budget in FY26 by three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. I would expect that this, over time, as the Fed begins to lower the interest rates, the Fed rate, um that will affect the returns that we're receiving from the money that's held in banks. They may actually go up with that, and it could increase, but um most analysts are expecting the rates to come down over the next couple of years as opposed to, to go up. Um, and then all the other areas, which is probably another, you know, hundred or so s- much, much smaller sources, created an additional two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. So overall, we're able to grow the budget next year by seven-point-seven million, which is a four-point-six-four uh percent increase. That's good news, because that's a healthy increase in terms of a budget. However, if we go to the next slide, this is um what we were grappling with for most of our budget um development process. These categories are increases that you could argue some of them, but generally are considered nondiscretionary cost increases. We've got um city salaries, so those are all the employees, uh anyone that doesn't work for the schools, uh based on the collective bargaining, collectively bargained agreements, those costs needed to go up a million dollars uh for FY26. We're carried right now at thirty-three-point-three million dollars of our budget um is going to city-side salaries. Now, keep in mind, and I failed to say this on the, on the earlier slide, but that seven-point-seven million dollars of additional money, uh that'll create a budget, an operating budget for next year, of a hundred-and-seventy-three-point-six-five million. So that's the money we have to work with, a hundred-and-seventy-three-point-six-five. Thirty-three-point-three of it is related to city-side salaries, which is a million-dollar increase over the FY25 amount. Also, pension uh liability uh is something that we're obligated by law to pay down uh by the year twenty forty. Um, we are on schedule to pay that down uh in, by twenty thirty-two, based on the current amortization schedule, uh but that obligation needs to go up by five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars as we go into FY26 to meet the uh adopted amortization schedule. The next one, health insurance. This one is always a tricky one because it's somewhat out of our control. Um, we are self-insured here in the city, as many of you know, so we pay dollar-for-dollar the healthcare costs of our employees and our retirees. Now, there are some cost-control measures we have in place and insurance values so that we aren't overly exposed to risk or high claim cases, but generally, we pay dollar-for-dollar everything. Um, our consultant that we work with to set the premium rates and the, and the plans has advised us that um we are going to need to go up on premiums by ten percent. That is significant, however, I do want to give you some context because across the state, this is by far on the low end. Most municipalities, whether they're in GIC, which is a conglomerate group uh at the state level that uh municipalities can opt into, or whether they're with MIA, which is a Blue Cross Blue Shield um group of multiple uh municipalities, those are going up anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent in some cases in terms of their premiums. So we're not alone here in terms of the percentage increase, and we're actually on the low end of this, but it is real money that we need to find in order to meet the obligation uh we have to our employees and our retirees. So that's an additional six-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand on the city side alone. So the city side covers, in terms of our budget, the active city employees and all of the retirees, including all of the retired teachers. So all the retirees and active cities. The school, within their operating budget, cover the active school employees, okay? So uh the true number of increase would be higher than six-seventy-six, uh because they're carrying an increase uh on the school side as well. Um, the Beverly Public Schools going up seven-point-one million, um still there in, you know, um I guess not debates, but review process and haven't voted on that number, but this is all preliminary, and this is what we're carrying right now. Um, on this slide, I do want to kind of draw attention to the percentage increases, too, because there's an important point I want to make when I get to the bottom of this slide. Um, so the Beverly Public Schools, it's a nine percent increase uh over the FY25 number. Essex Tech Assessment, which we receive from our outplacement of Beverly students to the Essex Tech, uh going up three-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, which is a ten-point-seven percent increase over the FY25. And then sanitation going up a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, which is a seven percent increase in that budget line for FY26. If you were to take all six of these categories and combine them, that's eighty-five percent of our spending is right here. So eighty-five percent of our budget is going up at rates greater than four percent, and some significantly greater than four percent. In fact, if you average all of these, the growth of this section of our budget is going to grow seven-point-two percent between FY25 and FY26. So eighty-five percent of our budget is growing at seven-point-two percent for this year, and that's an important takeaway, um and I'm gonna wrap that up in the, in the last slide as well. But, so, we've got nine-point-nine million dollars in new spending that is arguably nondiscretionary, right? And so we looked at seven-point-seven million in new money, nine-point-nine in new spending requirements, which leads me to my next slide, which is, how are we gonna make that fit? And so uh we've been working very hard, and I'd be remiss if I didn't um just acknowledge all the tremendously hard work that all the department heads, their staff, uh the school administration have been going through over the last multiple months um to try to kind of make decisions around operations, efficiencies, uh staffing structures, different ways to do things, to try to make this all work. Um, and uh, you know, we'll, we'll see at the end of this month, when the mayor presents his budget, um that we'll be able to close this gap. The main components that we're able to, to pro- to use to close this gap are listed below in the red. So for paving, uh we, in the operating budget, typically carry an amount there uh to fund ongoing paving work. That is only a portion of what we spend on paving every year. We get money from the state through Chapter Ninety, uh we get uh- We get grants through the state. Sometimes there's other sources that come in to fund our paving. And we also add funding from the general operating budget to round out our annual paving budget. In FY '25, we had 1.25 million earmarked in this category. So FY '26 will zero that budget out. However, we will be, before the end of June, asking the council to approve a transfer from free cash to cover the paving for FY '26. And right now, we have a floor value of 2.7. We hope it'll be more, but that's what we're kind of targeting right now in terms of an ask to transfer from free cash. Staff vacancies. We currently have a number of vacant positions on the city side that we are strategically funding. And I kind of chuckle a little bit because it's not that we're not filling the positions, it's that we realistically know that some of them, it's unlikely we'll have them filled by July 1. So therefore, we're not funding them for a full fiscal year. There are a couple notable positions that we're carrying at half a year funding, meaning we will reassess in the fall and look to get them onboard in January. And those positions are, I think I might have mentioned them there. Well, there's a couple of them. There's one in planning. We were toying with one in finance. There's also a couple in DPS that we are looking to as well. Capital equipment. We will be reducing down the DPS capital equipment purchase line, as well as there is some vehicle purchase lines in public safety, police vehicles particularly, that we'll bring down to zero because of a couple reasons. One, we've been able to get the fleet within the police department to a place where we're comfortable with the current frontline cars. And we also know that at some point in the fiscal year, we will likely, if the need arises, come back and utilize free cash to support some of those purchases as we need them. And then the last area that we were able to gain some reductions in, in terms of spending, has to do with debt. Some of our long-term debt has lower interest payments in FY '26 than they did in FY '25, to the tune of about a quarter million dollars. So we are pulling that out to fund some of the other increases we talked about before. And then there are some other smaller areas. They add up to about 300,000 throughout all the departments on the city side of the budget that close this gap and get it in a balanced state. We can go to the next one. Thank you. So this is my last slide, and it's kind of a what-now slide where there are still things that are unknown that we're watching very closely, and they all will have an impact one way or the other in our operations, in our revenue, in the things we rely on to deliver our services. So the first one here, I mentioned this when we talked about the spending slide. 85% of our budget grew at an average of 7.2%. So, you know, those areas that were listed on that previous slide really need to be closely monitored, reviewed, trying to put efficiencies in place where we can to try to contain that growth going forward. There were some one-time adjustments within those growth numbers that were necessary. So there are components of that growth that we don't think will continue at the same rate. So, you know, there is some optimistic view to that. The Fed interest rate, they met earlier today. They released a statement at 2 o'clock. The rates are going to stay the same for now. Why this is relevant to us is because we borrow. And whatever the rates are, it affects directly the cost of us borrowing money to do large infrastructure projects. And so as we have those updates, it will affect how much we need to budget for our interest payments on some of our larger projects. Tariff effects, this is, your guess is as good as mine with this, I think it's day-to-day. But regardless of what happens, it will have a favorable or unfavorable effect on everything we do, whether it's paper from Canada or chips from, you know, overseas, or, you know, our laptops, our supplies. Everything could potentially be affected by the tariff. So we need to see what's going to happen there. And then more locally, we need to keep an eye on our unemployment and the local economy because a lot of our revenue, aside from the property taxes, aside from the state aid, a lot of what's left, the excise, meals and room tax, cannabis excise, all these other sources are derived from discretionary spending of some way, right? People aren't going to put on a deck if they don't have the discretionary money to buy a new deck. So that would affect our new growth. That would affect, you know, the assessed values of property. So it's all related to how strong the economy is. So we try to keep a close eye on that. And if it's necessary, make adjustments in real time to not over-rely on areas that would get us into trouble. And then lastly, I put this as kind of a catch-all, but federal policy. We've already kind of seen some things that have just kind of made us a little concerned, particularly around some of the flowing of federal dollars. There was initially some freezing of grants that had already been obligated. Those have loosened up and the money's starting to flow. It's legally obligated to flow to us, but we do rely, in addition to the operating budget, we rely on a number of sources to fund regular operations or projects through grants, both on the school side and the city side. So it's really important to keep an eye on that and hopefully that those funds continue to flow in our direction. And then the other federal policy that we've heard of, and Mayor Cahill has been a staunch advocate, both, you know, locally with MIA, but also on the national, I believe it's League of Cities or one of those groups, to advocate. And some of the proposals that we've heard up on Capitol Hill may make some adjustments to this tax-exempt status of municipal bonds. Why this is relevant is because when we borrow money, we're able to issue debt at a much lower rate than you or I would pay on a mortgage, than you or I would pay on a car loan. And we're able to do that because we issue bonds and the bondholders are able to gain tax-exempt status from the income they receive from those bonds. So they're willing to take less of a payment for income because it's tax exempt. And if that status goes away, you would more likely be paying kind of market rate interest rates for your multimillion-dollar projects that all municipalities borrow for. So that's very concerning. And I'll stop there. And I'll take some questions if you have any. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. As President Abel mentioned, we can take questions while alternating city councilors and school committee members so that one body isn't waiting for the other. So city councilors, does anyone have, Councilor Feldman? We'll start with you.
Yes, thank you. So I understand that some of the built-in percentage increases you said were one-time, but it looks like, on the whole, it's 4% of an increase year over year that we're looking at for 85% of the budget. Is that kind of?
No, that 85% was about 7.2% increase.
Right, this year. But I was saying, like, at what rate are we looking at, at least over 4% for the next? The growth rate of that is over 4%, would you say?
Yeah, well, I mean, I can say that there are some knowns. For example, the collective bargaining agreements are pretty much, they're set for all of the unions, both city side and school side, and those are at 4%.
Right.
So, and that doesn't include columns and various, you know, restructuring that happens year to year contractually. So, yeah, it would be north of 4%, I would assume, for some of those larger ticket items. The pension, 4.15%, that's generally what it's going to be. I'm hopeful that maybe we won't see as large increases on the healthcare side. I'm hopeful, what was the other big one there? Oh, we'll see. We've got to restructure our trash contract in the coming years, so that potentially could provide some relief. So there are opportunities to reevaluate some of those increases to kind of keep it down.
So in that line of questioning, I guess, if our, you know, I know that our tax levy is, we're capped at 2.5% and we have excess levy capacity to tap for the next two budget cycles at this point.
Just one.
You have proposed one.
We did one this past year.
Oh, okay, sorry. The last, this last one of them, this next coming one. So I guess my question is, in terms of, has there been a consideration of, or discussion about an override, a possible market correction? Because if our expenses are trending, if 85% of our expenses are trending above 4% and we are looking at a growth rate of the major, the 80% of our revenue at 2.5%, it just doesn't, the math doesn't work. So I'm just, I understand we can, you know, pull here and there, but the heart of the matter, and I've talked about this probably for a year now, on off-subjects now with different constituents and people regarding the school budget, and it's just the expenses are outpacing the growth of our revenues. And I just, I'm hopeful that we can have a community discussion about deciding if we might want to consider something like an override. And I just was wondering if there was any consideration of that on the horizon in the coming years.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm not the one that makes policy. You all are, so I'm trying to provide you all the data. You know, if that's a conclusion that you, you know, and you're thinking, think is worth the effort, you know, obviously I can help support whatever information you need to help try to do what it is you need to do. I think there are a number of areas that potentially you could consider looking to, to alleviate either on the revenue side or the spending side. But that's, you know, again, that's for you policymakers to decide.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Dr. Silva.
Thank you. I'm curious to hear from you and the mayor about what negotiation tools you have with regard to healthcare. Last year, there was about a 10% or so increase, maybe even more. This year, we're seeing another sort of double-digit increase. At what point do you sort of change how that policy is configured? And what can the city do to negotiate healthcare plan that may be different to incur some savings?
Yeah. It's a great question. So as I said, we have a consultant that advises us. So we're continuing dialogue with that firm to see what other programs and offerings are at the state level, other communities. And we're constantly evaluating that. In terms of a process of how it would work, it's not that we, we, meaning Mayor Cahill, the administration, could make a unilateral decision. It would need to involve discussion from employees, policymakers, all of that, if in fact that were the direction that we were advised to go in.
But when would you have to have that discussion in order to know that you can leverage it when the decisions need to be made?
So I think it's a process that takes about a year to implement.
And since Dr. Silva, you addressed the mayor as well, I think the mayor, you want to?
Yeah, I could just add to that. Thanks, Madam President, and Mr. Silva. Yeah, we don't need to consider anything new and different to propose a balanced budget for FY '26. The city went through a planned reform when the state reformed healthcare, correct? 2000, I'm going to get the year wrong, but 11, 12.
15 years ago, it sounds like, about that.
And that would be the process it would take, would be to do a, you know, it would be a process that would involve every union, school and city side. And it is an involved process, and as I said, it's not something we're looking at right now.
Councilor Housman.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, Mr. Ailes, two questions. One is, I was interested in your estimate of interest income being increased by 375,000. And I'm just curious, is the bucket of money that we're earning interest on, has that gone up appreciably to allow for a budget increase in interest income? What is the source of being able to use that as a budget contributor that's larger than it has been in the past?
Yeah, so some of it is, some of it is the balance, right? Collectively, we've made policy decisions as a community to establish the stabilization fund. That is not just sitting there idle. It's invested with the MMDT, which is a state-run mechanism that tries to maximize float and floats money day over day to try to maximize a yield. That's yielding about 5%. So that's significant return on that money that's sitting there. But in addition to that, we, I believe, please don't quote me on this because I don't know the exact number in the budget for FY '25, but I think it's about $500,000 is what we budgeted for FY '25 to come in. To date, we've got 1.4 million. So the rates at where they're at right now is generating 1.4 million annually. Now, we can't go and say we're going to get 1.4 million next year because it's possible that next month, when the Fed meets again, they could lower the rates another quarter percent or a half percent or something like that. We don't know what's going on with unemployment, and we don't know what's going on with inflation. That's what the Fed said today. We don't know yet. We need to let the dust settle on some of this stuff before we go monkeying around with rates. Obviously, I'm paraphrasing. They said it much more. But that's going to have an effect. So I don't want the city to be in a position where we've over-relied on this source of revenue, and then mid-year, the rates start dropping and it's not materializing to the level we need it. However, I'm comfortable, even at 5, it's at 500 now, going to 875, I believe, for next year, or somewhere in that range, because we're still far enough below what we're taking in at 1.4 to be able to weather a reduction in the Fed rate mid-year.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. May I ask you a second question?
You may.
Yeah, so I'm interested in free cash as a source of funding for paving particularly. That's what certainly board councilors and maybe all councilors here, if not the largest concern people have, one of the largest. If we continue to take free cash at this, at the rate that's being projected for this coming FY '26 budget, how many years can we do that? Can we do that for four years? At what point do we say we really can't continue to use that as a source and then we're really in a bind? Because that's something that we count on substantially every single year.
Yeah, it depends on the economy, right? And we all know this because we talk in the forecast about it, we talked during budget season about it, that when we make estimates in terms of our revenue that we're going to bring in, we leave, just like we talked about the interest two seconds ago, we leave enough to guard against a downturn in the economy. If the economy remains strong, there is excess revenue, is what I would call it. That's the money that goes back and replenishes free cash. So as long as the economy continues to be strong, we can continue to rely on this going forward. If the economy begins to deteriorate and we fail to make adjustments to spending and to how much we're relying on this revenue, then it will, less will return back to the free cash, and then it becomes a problem over time. But at some point, if that were to happen and the economy begins deteriorating, there needs to be, there needs to be priority decisions made. Is that paving line more important than something else that we might be funding? Because there's only so much revenue, as we know, 7.7 for next year, that we can reasonably rely on and be responsible in our, you know, in our roles here.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. From the school committee, could we go to Mayor Cahill?
I just want to give one more. So as Mr. Ailes said, that ability to fund roads and sidewalks at the level we all want year over year, coming from free cash, yes, it's dependent on the economy. It's also dependent on what other competing demands we all have come our way, right? Yeah, I mean, there are many things that we've been able to use cash reserves for that have been appropriate and needed, and just, we, so we, you know, we've all got to kind of ride this together, you know?
Yeah, may I follow up with the next comment? Yeah, I guess where I was going was, if at some point we can't take it from free cash, then we have reserves. And at what point would the city start looking, saying we have to look to reserves, not simply free cash? And we're sort of backing into a more problematic source of funding as we go through that process.
So when I say cash reserves, I'm not saying free cash because it's a horrible definition for the state to use for money we have in our accounts that it's not already encumbered.
that's not already encumbered. So I'm looking to that amount. I think you're suggesting, is there a point where we look to the stabilization fund? And the stabilization fund, as we all know, is meant to get us through a three-year recession, not to pave streets. So I, I, I think we have to be really careful about where we look for, for, you know, for this, which, which look we have together been able to do a lot, and, and I think we're gonna be able to do a lot this construction year, you know, fiscal year coming up. But it is, it is one of our challenges going forward. Thanks.
Are we giving that as a question or a response?
I guess a response.
Okay, so we'll call in Ms. Visnick, and then we'll go back to city councilors.
I wanna just try to clarify. And we've sat, you and I, and, and several other people around this table have sat in financial forecasting a lot. We choose as a community to budget our incomes very conservatively, and that's what gives us the surplus at the end of the year. We could choose to budget our, our revenues less conservatively and have that, I don't know, pick a number, one point six, two million, in our operating budget to take and say that's, there's your roads and sidewalks. It literally is six of one, half dozen of another. We have chosen as a community to be conservative in our estimates, and, and, and therefore, we can take it at the end of the year out of the other bucket that, I don't wanna use the wrong term. So I, I really, I think that it's, there is a public perception problem relative to how we make our budget. We choose to do it this way, similar with how we choose to use our capital expenditures. We also could put those as line items in the budget, but we, we choose not to do that. So I, I don't wanna leave that on the table as, oh, we're only gonna fund our roads and sidewalks out of, what term?
Cash reserves.
Cash reserves, thank you. I really have so much homework to go home and do. It's not even, only stats words are in my head right now. I don't wanna leave that on the table as this bad perception, because, again, the bigger picture and how, and what we choose as a group collectively, and what we choose to do in financial forecasting, as well as what the city councilors choose to do in building and contributing to that budget, that is our choice. Thank you.
Councilor Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam President. A lot of points of discussion here. I do have a few questions, but I wanna circle back to the point you were making, Dr. Silva. Note, in Oxford, the community that I work in, which is a Maya member community, health insurance premiums are going up twenty percent. So to, you know, to the point Mr. Ailes is making, ten percent is certainly an enormous number to look at in a vacuum, but given the market that municipalities are facing with health insurance, it could certainly be a lot worse. But that being said, I think we do need to be proactive in evaluating plan offerings and ways to try to control costs in the face of a health insurance market that's very chaotic. Some specific questions I have for you, Mr. Ailes, based on the presentation. I noticed you mentioned a pretty sizable reduction in the amount to be deposited into the overlay account. And I know that as a council, and I certainly appreciated the support of my colleagues, we passed a proposal last year that would significantly increase the amount of tax exemptions we offered to qualifying seniors and veterans, which obviously is paid for somewhere. It's that overlay account. Do you have any concern with that increased commitment that the city has made if we reduce this amount as is proposed and kind of maintain a funding level at this reduced amount in future fiscal years? Do you think there will be sufficient funding to meet these obligations that we've committed ourselves to?
Certainly, great question. Certainly, in the FY twenty-six budget, yeah, I'm, I'm not worried about it at all.
Okay.
We've settled some recent litigation cases that were liabilities on the books that have now come in less. So that's good news. So there's a balance in there that could handle about two years' worth of overlay costs without any additional deposits in, into it. That said, the proposal that we're still, you know, we're still refining, but it puts a hundred and fifty thousand into the overlay. Typically, what happens is the new growth that's budgeted for one, two, five, if it comes in at one, four, well, the difference goes into the overlay, and that one fifty becomes, you know, two hundred or two fifty instead of one fifty. So that's kind of how that works. So there'll be a little bit that gets replenished back through the, through the recap, recapitulation process that we do in December.
Okay, thank you for that.
And I'm comfortable with it, for sure.
Okay, I appreciate that. Another question I have pertains to the trash contract, which we had just talked about, and to confirm, it expires at the end of this coming fiscal year, the end of FY twenty-six?
Yep, June thirty, twenty-six.
Was that a ten-year contract or a five-year contract?
It was a five.
Okay. And I just ask because I know that the market has really shifted, and trash collection and disposal is much more signi- significantly more expensive than it used to be. So that's something that we'll, as a city, need to keep an eye on going forward.
Because you wanna go to pay as you thrill?
I, I think we need to have a conversation about the entirety of our trash program and what we can afford, and, you know, how sustainable the model is, certainly. The last question that I have for you pertains to the cost-saving measure that you had listed about partially funding some positions. My only concern with that is that if they're positions that the city determines it wants to keep and to fill eventually, then we're essentially kicking the can down the road in terms of needing to fully fund those positions for the following fiscal year. So is, is this, is that the case? And if so, I would be a little concerned. But on the flip side, is there a real chance that we're thinking of eliminating some of these positions that we're not looking to immediately backfill? Could you maybe elaborate on where the administration stands in terms of the next fiscal year with regards to how you're thinking of backfilling these positions?
Yeah. So let, let me start by kind of putting it in, in perspective. So the savings generated from that structuring is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So even if we decided collectively that they're positions that we absolutely have to have, we're gonna fund them, then we annualize that amount in FY twenty-seven, it would be an additional hundred and twenty-five thousand that we would need to build into the FY twenty, twenty-seven budget, uh, above the FY twenty-six budget. So in terms of kind of severity, when we're talking a hundred and, at that point, it'll probably be, you know, a hundred and eighty million dollar budget. I'm not that concerned about kind of making, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred and twenty-five available. So there's that. There's also, I mean, anytime there's, and I'll use my, my division for, as an example, anytime there's a vacancy, I think it's important for a manager to say, how do we operate? What sort, what skill sets are we losing? How do we, how can we maybe challenge additional employees that maybe wanna take some additional opportunity and maybe restructure, you know, vacancies in a way that might not be the exact same position that walked out the door? And so sometimes you can create a better mousetrap doing that. So I think the mayor's been very, very good about, over the past few months, even beyond that, anytime there's a vacancy, really kind of kicking the tires on it and saying like, what do they exactly do? What does this other staff do? How could we maybe share some responsibilities? Are there ways to restructure? Are there ways to look at things that might be a better efficient model going forward? And I, yeah, I'll, I'll stop there. That's...
Okay, that, that's helpful in itself. Thank you for that, Mr. Ailes.
Yeah, for sure.
And that was my last question, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Were there other school committee members with questions? I think you have one more, City Councilor.
Councilor Bellin.
Thank you. I had a, a similar question on the staffing, and just wanted to put in a plug for filling the social services navigator position in the Health Department, because I've heard from many people about the value of that position and wanting to see that refilled sooner than later. So you had mentioned possibly planning finance or DPS, having vacancies that might be able to hold off for a bit, but that one in particular, I know, is top of mind for a lot of folks. I can pause there.
Can I, can I, can I help?
There's an update.
We will be filling that position. What we've tried to do is take, take another look, because there are really three departments that have the greatest claim on that opioid settlement money, settlement money, which funds that position, and that's the School Department, Police Department, and Health. So we've been, we've been asking, and kind of, the superintendent and, and her team have been looking at the schools, and, and the chief has been looking at PD. So we're just, we're looking at what's the balance in the account, what we expect to take in over the next year, two years, where we might spend in addition to the social service navigator. But we're just about ready to, to press go on, on posting that. Thanks.
That is good news, because I know it is. So really missed the first person to be in that role, really built a, a strong foundation. So I'm curious, I, I have one question on staffing still, and then a question on capital planning and, and the debt schedule. So the, the staffing question is just, do any of those same assumptions on reducing, or finding some savings in operations, capital, capital spending, line items, or staffing, sort of by not filling positions carry over into the school budget assumptions as well? I know that process is, is launching, and public hearing is coming up, so we'll hear more about that. But just at a high level, are similar assumptions being made in both, you know, the, where we are hearing savings might come on the city side, are those same assumptions being made on the school side in some way?
I'll defer to Dr. Churchill.
So, so I would say, yes, we, we, I presented the budget in the past school committee meeting that we had. It includes that exact philosophy and that strategy, as well as looking at attrition. So, you know, schools, we have retirements, we have, we have more fluctuation and more movement than probably in a number of positions. And so absolutely, definitely, we are, we are applying that same strategy. And it was a very part, big part of the presentation that we did. So if you take a look at that presentation, you'll see the areas, and it was from school to school and across departments. So, yeah.
Thank you. My other question is around the overall capital planning, and whether, you mentioned some adjustments in what we're, what our expected debt payments would be in the coming year. But I'm curious if that's based on adjustments to the overall debt schedule and what we think the large projects are gonna be, or it's just what was already programmed in, and this coming year happens to be a dip in our debt payments?
Yeah, it's, for those of you that recall the debt schedule, at the very end of the capital expenditure plan, all the projects are listed that we've already committed to. And so we basically have mortgage payments on those. Like, we're in one now, right? And there's one up the street, and the police station. And so there's a lot of projects that we're continuing to pay down the principal on, and have interest payments associated with those. The way this administration has structured the debt is that it's, it's what's called equal principal payments. It's not like a mortgage payment where you pay the same every month. Every year, because you're paying equal principal payments, the interest associated with the remaining principal goes down. So it's actually kind of like a stepped down payment model. And so as the years go by, it creates capacity to either layer in additional debt or reduce the debt budget. In this instance, we're able to reduce the debt budget, because it was about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings on the interest portion of existing debt. We're still carrying some other funds, as always planned, related to upcoming projects and the paydown of some other debt that's been authorized.
Just, so to, to sort of bring those pieces together, it sounds like that, that means not layering in new debt, potentially at levels we had previously talked about in the coming fiscal year, that may give us more space in future fiscal years for some of the other variables. But it sounds like between all of these assumptions at this stage in the budget process, you're thinking of a balanced budget that doesn't suggest cuts in actual programming levels anywhere? Or are there any pieces that, you know, not hiring staff in one area, or pushing something out a little further might impact services in a way?
I would consider this a level service budget. You know, there will be some areas where we need to be mindful of spending levels, but it's, it's a manageable budget that delivers the same level of services last year. And just one other point on the, on the debt, it just slipped my mind. I'm sorry, well, slipped my mind.
Okay.
One last question.
Okay.
I have another thing, Councilor. Payment towards a pension liability that was going to be paid off eight years earlier, if I recall correctly. Is there any reason why paying it off aggressively, not extending it another eight years?
Yeah.
And maybe there could be some savings there?
Yeah, it, there could be some savings. However, this has been a timeframe that this city has been committed to for as long as I've been here. And every time we go before Standard and Poor's or Moody's, they look at the debt ratios and the long-term liabilities of the city as a grading factor when they grade our debt. And so it has a direct correlation to the interest rate we're able to borrow at if we check all these certain boxes that Standard and Poor's are looking at. And so to deviate from the plan could potentially be seen as a weakness in our financial structure, right? We're taking away, paying down our liabilities to prop up operating expenses, right?
But in, in response to an, an unstable economy, would it, could you still make that argument that, you know, it was needed to, to address the economies, the economic situation?
You could always make the argument. I would also say that the amount of money you would save would probably dwarf the amount of money you save from a better bond rating.
Okay.
Because we're right now, we're one from the top. We're one of the premier communities in, in the Commonwealth in terms of our financial structure. We're double A-plus, that's, that's a good rating. And so if you were to go down a rating, you could see a quarter percentage point, and, and we're not talking a borrowing like a car of thirty thousand dollars, we're talking thirty million, forty million, fifty million dollars, this, you know, so it's significant amounts of interest you would pay from differing interest rates.
Councilor Rotundo.
Mr. Ailes, just a question on the debt capacity, knowing that there are projects possibly on the horizon, and looking to be a little more aggressive, I guess. How will this affect, I think we have five point six or five point seven debt capacity, and I know the comparable rates always said six to eight percent. Will this affect the term of projects, capital projects, if we still have to really maintain properties? We know there's City Hall possibly, wherever that goes, but as well as DPS campus. Do you see with going in this direction? Is it gonna affect the debt capacity? Are we consuming any of this into the operating budget that, I know it's always been a concern that, you know, we lose that capacity and we'll never get it back. Are we following that direction, knowing where the economy is becoming unstable, revenues are, are not pacing the expenditures and all that?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, you're right. It, it's concerning. I've stated it multiple times that we wanna be mindful not to lose your debt budget. As the interest falls off, you don't wanna consume it in operations. This is a relatively minor piece of the overall budget for debt, and we do still have within the debt budget a short-term principal line that is effectively paying down debt before you even borrow for it. So there's no interest cost to that debt. And that will, that is continuing to be maintained at the same level. That's ultimately what will get layered in to service new debt when these new projects come on board. But in fairness, I mean, we're all sitting here, we're all, we all have our own budgets we're managing at home. We can't do everything, right? And, and that's why it's important to have these discussions in this setting, because you all are the ones making the policy decisions. And, and as much as we wanna do everything, there's never enough money to do it all. So if we can collectively develop, you know, the priority lists and things, we can get there. It's just a matter of, sometimes there's trade-offs.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Questions? Councilor Sweeney, are you raising your hand?
No.
If I, if I may, I have just a question, I think, for Dr. Trocheck and Dr. Flaherty, and then Mr. Ailes, one for you, if that's okay. I'm curious, Dr. Trocheck, I, hearing Mr. Ailes talk about the budget as a level services, level service budget, I'm curious just if you wanted to offer any thoughts about how you would categorize the school portion of the budget. I, obviously, we saw that there's some investment of money in the schools, but also just, you were just referencing, there's some reduction through attrition that will happen, sometimes naturally, and sometimes maybe as part of that balancing act. So I was curious if you wanted to be able to say a little bit about how you would categorize the school part of the budget in light of Mr. Ailes' comments? the school part of the budget in light of Mr. Ailes's comments?
So I would categorize it as level service. I think we made adjustments based on, you know, either enrollment fluctuations among levels, we have a few more moving parts as, as far as that goes, and taking a look specifically at sort of some reorganization. So there's some, Ben, for example, in central office, a reorganization that, doing it in a similar way. So there, I don't know if you're aware, there are two of us retiring in a couple of months. And so that offered an opportunity to do exactly what Bryant was describing, take a look at the tasks, the responsibilities, you know, all of those key responsibilities, and where they lie, and what those roles would look like, and what kind of realignment might, you know, allow us to provide the same level of service without impacting student outcomes, but, but also devise some efficiencies that we can use in that area. So similarly, that's the approach that we took to the budget.
Thank you. Are, may I ask, are there any areas that give you cause for concern in terms of student-to-educator ratios in light of, in light of shifts?
No, we want, we were very careful. Our, our class sizes are very, are well below the targets that are set, so we're, I was very pleased with when we, you know, did the final look at enrollments, how that fell out. We have, I think the, the, someone else asked me that question, I think the one area that I will continue to always watch is we're committed to our multi-tiered systems of supports, and taking a look at some of those Tier Two interventions and how we're providing them. This year, we worked really hard. Every elementary principal in, in particular, looked so closely at how they deliver service. It looks different in every building, and so we didn't, you know, hold them to a cookie-cutter approach. Each principal had the ability to take a look at their building, and make sure, "How can I provide the same level of service, and with what, you know, what adjustments would I make in order to make sure that they were more efficient for my building?" Every one of our schools has a different, you know, pulse, a different, different leader, and, you know, a different personality, you might say, and so, so they were very careful to do that. So I'm confident that they've done that, but that's the area that we had hyper-focus on this year.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And Mr. Ailes, my question for you, if I may, was, you, you did already allude a bit to, you know, uncertainties in the economy, and that there would have to be areas that we'd be watching, but I was curious if you could share, I was somewhat surprised to see motor vehicle excise tax increase. I know you said it closer to where we typically land, but I was curious if you could share a little of your thought process behind what you anticipate in that area, or what led to that decision? I, I was surprised, because I would have expected that tariffs might be an, an area that tariffs might really impact would be consumers' ability to buy new cars, and newer automobiles, obviously, well, I won't say obviously, if people don't know, a, a newer car is assessed at a higher excise tax. So I was curious your thoughts on how much optimism you have that will land close to where we've been, in light of some of the variables that haven't existed? And it sounds like that would be one of the areas you're suggesting we'd have to watch closely and, and pull back, or, or make other adjustments if we see that that's not coming to fruition?
Yeah. We, that number that we're, we're proposing there relies on, you can, you can absorb a 10% reduction in motor vehicle excise. In the worst year of the last two recessions, the most we ever saw was a 15%. So I know it's unprecedented, the tariffs, we don't know, but, you know, you talk to some analysts, and they say people are rushing out to buy the cars because they're afraid of the tariffs hitting, so that could create an uptick, you know? I don't know, but we will keep a very close eye on that one, for sure. And also, as we do the tax rate in December, there are opportunities, if we're seeing kind of the weather turning, we're able to shift that reliance on revenue to maybe another stream that might be a little stronger. Or make, you know, a, a mid-year adjustment if we need to on the spending side as well.
Thank you. Thank you. It's always a pleasure to join our colleagues from City Council in this annual event. I, I'm so appreciative for Dr. Chorchak, Dr. Flaherty, and the team behind your presentation, as well as Mr. Ailes. I'm looking for a school committee member to make a motion that we adjourn the school committee portion.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. No, it's not debatable. And thank you, Ms. Quayle, for the second. All school committee members? Okay. Thank you. The motion passes at 8:05. Thank you. And I will echo those words of thanks, appreciation on behalf of the City Council, to our school committee colleagues for joining us for this meeting. It's always a chance for us to learn a lot more about what's happening, a look ahead at the budget, but certainly to hear what's happening on the school side of things. So thank you, Dr. Chorchak and your team, for that presentation. Thank you, Mr. Ailes. And councillors, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Seven zero. We're adjourned.
[laughing] [inaudible]